Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the June 17th, 2020 City Council Meeting, starting at 4:00 PM at 520 J Street. And before we start the meeting, could I please have Vince Fernandez from the Star of David Church come forward for our invocation? Right here. Follow the red light.
All right, just would like to pray for wisdom right now for the decisions that the council has to make. So, Father God, we just thank you, Lord, that you said if any man lack wisdom, ask of you, Father. And you said first, pray for those that are in authority, Father. So, we pray for everyone that has to make difficult decisions in this time, Father. So, we pray for wisdom, Father. We pray for your favor upon this city. We pray for peace, Father. We pray, Father God, for right minds and right hearts, Father, to prevail in the city of Los Banos right now, Father. So, we pray for your peace, Father, to be upon your men and women that are making decisions, Father. So, we thank you, Father, for what you're doing, in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of June 17th, 2020. And Chief, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Faria?
Here.
Johnson Santos?
Here.
Jones?
Present.
Lewis? Valalta, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Santos?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Ms. Jones? Is that you?
Did you push it there?
Oh, probably someone else. I think it just, we have, we're having a little difficulty here.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Johnson Santos, second by Jones, for the approval of agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Oh, excuse me. Speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement, limited 250 words or less, or by dropping it off the utility box at the City Hall 520 Dray Street by emailing cityclerk@losbanos.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the City Council Meeting. And Director Maloney, do we have any comments? Okay? Could you please read those? Oh, okay. Okay. You just want to come to the podium mic and do it, or? Thank you.
I haven't done this before. This is kind of weird. I have comments regarding mask that we, do you want to read those later?
Anything that's COVID-related, we'll do it to COVID presentation. And anything that's non-COVID, we'll read into the record now.
Okay, I have some of those comments.
Okay.
To whom it may concern, I am a parent of two children involved in Los Banos Little League and have been for the past eight years. This season will be my oldest son's last season with the organization, and I'd very much like for him to play with his friends. Little League baseball means so much to these kids in our community, and I'd hate to see so many of them not get their final season and so many more not get to start their first season. It has been brought to my attention that the high school football teams are practicing and conditioning for their upcoming season. It seems to me that to not allow baseball players to play their season, as their sport is so very low contact, especially compared to football. The board has made a list of safety guidelines that will ensure safety of the players, coaches, and umpires, and I, as a parent, feel that my children are perfectly safe out on a field in the sunlight playing America's favorite pastime. Merced County Department of Health says it is safe for our children to resume youth sports. Please allow our children to partake in their sport. Some of these kids, baseball is life. They have already had so very much taken from them this year. Please don't be the one standing between them and their sport. Sincerely, Shelley Hoskins. Dear City Council, please consider opening organized sports. Our children need to get back to some normalcy. We have flattened the curve and are prepared. Please do not let your fear prevent our children from living. Thank you, Yvonne Egleton. Please let kids get back out on the field. For some of them, this is their only out, especially those that have anxiety issues and are going through a lot, having to be cooped up right now. The kids in this community need to have something to do that is normal to them. Thank you, from Allison Diaz. My name is Michael Lopez, and I am asking for the city of Los Banos to allow my sons to play baseball this year. We love baseball. It is a special thing in our house, and to be out there coaching my boys is the best feeling in the world. They were very much looking forward to this season. Please allow them to play. We are willing to take any precautions needed. My sons' names are Michael Lopez Jr., Andrew Lopez, and Jacob Castro. Thank you. Signed, Michael Lopez.
Thank you. Could someone, I know we can't discuss this, so could someone please get back to those individuals' recreation, so we can discuss with them and tell them what's available and what is not available? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Let's go on to, any other public forum comments?
No, I haven't.
Thank you. Okay? Let's go on to Item 6, Consideration of Approval Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, be voted on in one motion, unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 222430 through 222570, in the amount of $542,823.13. Minutes for the June 3rd, 2020 City Council Meeting. Minutes for the June 4th, 2020 Adjourned City Council Meeting. Minutes for the June 9th, 2020 Adjourned City Council Meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6226, authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with the Los Banos Unified School District for School Resource Officer Services for the 2020-2023 school years. City Council Resolution Number 6227, accepting grant deed for parcel dedications of Lot A, as shown on that certain map entitled Shaughnessy Village Phase Number 3, and Lot C, D, and E, as shown on that certain map entitled Shaughnessy Village Phase Number 1. City Council Resolution Number 6228, amending the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget by increasing revenues in the amount of $56,211 and expenditures in the amount of $22,000 for the Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund. City Council Resolution Number 6229, authorizing application for and receipt of local government planning support grant programs, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Is there anyone, A through H, who would like to remove an item for discussion? If not, oh, Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Hang on, Mr. Faria. Oh, wait a minute, wrong one here. I got to get this here. You can control that mic.
Oh, okay, there we go. And then just turn on. Second.
And would you second that for me, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Lewis, second by Faria, for the approval of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay. All right. Let's go on to COVID-19 Status Update. City Council Resolution Number 6223, ratifying in part, amending in part, and rescinding in part that certain executive order, 2020-01, Order of the City Manager in the City of Los Banos in its capacity as Director of Emergency Services, date of October, April 14th, 2020. Hey? Who's, is that you, Alex?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. It should be on.
Yeah, it's on.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a couple things before I jump into the agendized item. Council may have noticed that you have not been receiving daily updates from Merced County of the city. You have moved to a new report, and that will be sent on Tuesdays, so you should be receiving an update tomorrow. So, I'm watching the mailboxes for that, and they've indicated they're demobilizing to a certain degree a number of staff. Just because they're applying a certain amount of, yes, formalities. Then I'll go ahead and jump into the brief.
It should be on.
To the brief staff report I have this afternoon. You have it in front of the council this afternoon, Resolution Number 6223, which is amended the executive order 2020-01. The amendments before you this afternoon reflect the direction provided by the council on Tuesday. So, the executive order, again, that reflects the direction provided by the council. The items are in the staff report, not in the 2020 number. So, those amendments include that city social distancing and sanitation protocol have been replaced with the same county health officer risk assessment and implementation program with the additional requirement of a self-certification form, and the number of, like, the staff. The Second Amendment is in place, and the direction, the city's base government requirement has been amended to extend to all those in the state and organization authorized to remain open, which are allowed to be open, per se, made, ordered by the same county health officer. That takes up a little department. It does extend to civil operating facilities, and that needs city council changes.
They can't hear him. It's on mute. You've accidentally muted everybody.
For you this afternoon, provide, provide that exemption based on disability, health or safety risks, which are less than two years. Hold on one second, Alex. Where I'm at with the mics?
You're muted.
Yeah, it's not. Um.
I saw that flash.
I think the light's on, but it's.
The light? Yeah. Tap it, tap it, Mike. It's not working?
No.
Okay. Try that one.
Yeah, he said that.
Stacy, would you tap that mic for me, please? Yeah. Bill, would you turn yours on? Tap yours, Bill.
Is mine on?
Tap it for me. Yeah.
I got this one.
Try that one, Alex.
So, should I just start over again?
Yes, please.
Maybe for the benefit of folks at home. So, I'll just start from the beginning. You may have noticed that you are not receiving daily updates from Merced County regarding new COVID cases. The county has moved to a weekly update for new cases. They should be sending that out, or they've indicated they'll send that out on Wednesdays. Haven't received it yet today, so I would anticipate that coming this afternoon. So, moving from daily updates on COVID, new COVID cases, from daily to weekly on Wednesdays. So, I'll just jump right into the agendized item for this afternoon. The item for this afternoon is Resolution Number 6223, which is a resolution proposing to amend Executive Order 2020-01. The amendments before you this afternoon reflect the direction provided by the council at the June 3rd meeting, and I'll just very briefly run through those amendments that are included in the executive order, or the amended executive order before you this afternoon. So, the city's social distancing and sanitation protocol has been replaced with Merced County Health Officer's Risk Assessment and Implementation Program with the additional requirement for businesses to complete a self-certification, a self-certification. Second Amendment being proposed this afternoon is the city's face covering requirement has been amended to extend to all businesses and organizations authorized to remain open, or which are allowed to open pursuant to the May 8th County Health Officer Order. And that requirement for face coverings, again, based on the council's direction, does extend to city-operated buildings, including City Hall and the council chambers. The Third Amendment, based on the council's direction, is the face covering requirement has been amended to provide exemptions based on disability, health or safety risks, and for children less than two years, excuse me, of age. And then lastly, the capacity limitation that was included in the order of five persons per thousand square feet, and the limitation of one adult per shopping cart, has been amended. So, just to conclude, the executive order and the corresponding resolution do include those amendments, based on the direction we receive from you as the council. So, we would be looking to the council to consider adoption of Resolution 6223, based on the direction we, as the staff, received. So, that concludes my presentation. I may need to tag team with the city attorney to guide us through the process, but that concludes my presentation. Available for questions, of course. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. At the last council meeting, we voted on five separate areas, and just to recap those, they are face masks for the general public throughout Los Banos. One person per cart, of which we, we, is no longer valid. We decided that by majority vote, there will not be one person per cart. And also, by majority vote, we decided to rescind the five people per thousand square feet. The council did affirm council chambers face masks and City Hall face masks. So, as promised, I, I said every two weeks, I would bring the general public face mask item up for a vote, and to do that again, it's another two weeks. And so, what I'd like to do is put that one on the table for another vote, and to finalize this order, whether we're going to have face masks throughout the city of Los Banos or not. So, at this time, I would need, if anyone would so like, to make a motion about the face masks, to rescind them or keep them? Yes? Oh, the public comments? Sure. Okay. So, so, let's. Okay, go ahead. No, no, adjusted by majority vote. I didn't say that it was. Oh, no. No, 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 majority. Majority vote, Mrs. Lewis. I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. So, that takes care of Mrs. Lewis. Okay, why don't we go, unless council members have comments at this time, then I will read the, have her read those. Is that okay?
Yes.
You'll go? All right. Thank you, Lucy. There you go.
It starts off, "We let people protest day and night without rules. Let be, let be real and stop this madness," from Larry Hernandez. Mayor Valalta and members of the Los Banos City Council, it is way past time to open the city back up to life before COVID-19. Maintaining the wearing of face masks is not only useless, but it is detrimental to the wearer's health and does absolutely nothing to prevent the spread of the virus. These restrictions should have been abandoned a month ago and serve no valid purpose but to further the erosion and magnify the losses already suffered by the local businesses at the hands of panic marketing and poor leadership. I, for one, will drive out of town to spend my money before I will wear a mask. Most people feel the same way. You are not preventing the spread of the virus, but bankrupting your own community, the very citizens that you represent. Those that feel that a mask will prevent them from catching the virus can still wear a mask. Those that are sick can stay home, but vast majority of people should not be dictated to by you. We are not children to be directed in our lifestyle. The last I heard, we are still a free society governed by the Constitution. This little experiment in socialism was an abject failure. None of this should have happened. We, we've been through these types of pandemics before and have never shut down the country. All of you bought into the roots of fear and panic, only succeeding the economic destruction of the city of my birth, Los Banos. Many small businesses will not survive this shutdown, and our citizens will buy out of town. The masks do nothing other than represent a complete misunderstanding of a minor level of protection. The masks only represent a feel-good symbol for the uninformed. Get a grip on reality. Get rid of the mask. Let Los Banos back to a normal way of life. Signed, G. Seguspi, Los Banos native son and a fed-up resident of Los Banos. Hello, as a citizen, as a Los Banos citizen, I think getting rid of wearing masks should be implemented as soon as possible. I have been to other towns, and they do not require this. Thank you, Bailey Williams. Hello, I am writing to ask that you rescind the city mask ordinance. The masks are supposed to help with asymptomatic spread of the virus. However, just recently, the so-called Experts World Health Organization said that asymptomatic spread of the virus is very rare. This feel-good ordinance has crippled many local businesses. I ask that you leave it up to the individual to wear a mask if they so choose. There is too much conflicting information coming from our unelected health officials to validate that wearing masks help at all. to validate that wearing masks help at all. Also, with the summer heat already here, the mask will cause more breathing problems for everyone. Thank you, signed, Richard Barton. Hello, it's past time to cancel the order for masks in Los Banas. This order is crippling business and it is accomplishing nothing good. Besides that, there is ample evidence the virus has lost potency. Please read this article explaining the strength the virus had two months ago is not the same strength it has today. And that is clear that today, the COVID-19 disease is different. And she rests, um, references a website called Just the News, and it's from Larry and Rhonda Borelli. My name is Patricia McCoy, and I am a Los Banas resident. I am writing to express my voice for the city council to rescind the mandatory requirement of wearing face masks in businesses. While Merced County recommends it does not mandate the requirement of wearing face masks. City councils should allow each individual to decide for themselves if they want to wear a mask. It should also be left to each business to decide if it is something that businesses want to require. It's called choice, and the city council should allow the people of Los Banas to choose what is best for the individual. Signed, Patricia McCoy. Masks need to be a choice. There are unhealthy, they are unhealthy and do not protect anyone. It is a false security and very unsanitary. Our city parks need to be opened immediately. Our children deserve to play and be free. The city never sanitized the equipment in the past, why would it be a concern? The community has the right to utilize our parks and should not be denied our city parks. Thank you, Erica Meza. To our leaders of Los Banas, I wanted to tell you that our leaders of Los Banas have been doing a great job of having strict policies and protocols to stop the spread of COVID-19. Because of our leaders, quick actions in comparison to Merced have less cases. Even though we started with the largest healthcare outbreak, although there are many people who are not taking it seriously, it is up to the leaders to keep those who are at risk safe and healthy. Masks in businesses should continue to be required. We cannot assume it is safe because the economy is reopening. We must continue to take the great precautions if we want to remain open. Businesses need to enforce this. Code enforcement needs to enforce this on businesses and make it known because too many are being comfortable. They are forgetting that this virus is real. We should do, we still do not know enough about the virus to expect things to go back to normal we once knew. We need to remember many commuters are now back at work, traveling all across the Bay Area. Let's continue to remain careful and stay open. And it's signed from a no-name email address. Um, "Good day. I am writing this letter for my voice to be heard. I'm, I am a resident who has lived in Los Banas for over fifty years. I watched the last city council meeting in sheer disbelief for the lack of organization and the callous disregard to the constituents of Los Banas. First, the fact you are wearing masks while speaking. You are clearly practicing social distancing by sitting six feet apart and allowing no one in the chambers. It was very hard to understand what some of you were saying. And considering you have no closed caption, it is very disrespectful for our community members with hearing loss. I would recommend you watch a Merced County meeting, even the Merced County Health Representative removes hers when she comes up to speak. Per the CDC, it recommends you wear a cloth face covering in a public setting where you cannot social distance. I found it disturbing, at the time of your vote, you voted against the five per a thousand feet and also against the one family member per cart, which actually helps us social distance, yet you voted for making masks mandatory. I also find it disturbing that be, that before you voted, one of your members talked about stores that we do not even have in our town, such as Costco. And our mayor gave us a lecture on how he wanted it on record that this is not his idea, and how he clearly reprimanded the other members and said, and sadly, I say to Mr. Fariah, you clearly did what was in your best interest, which I understand you have been through a lot, but it was not what the majority of your constituents wanted. Merced County is a mask-optional county. Your vote on June 3rd took away the voice and the rights of many here in Los Banas. I am asking that you vote no on mandatory masks, that you give the people in our local businesses of this community the option on whether they choose to enforce masks, and that we simply follow the Merced County guidelines. It is important that you remember those who choose to wear masks will still have the right to do so. They will still have the option to social distance and the option to not shop at stores who are not enforcing masks. A yes vote simply takes away everyone's right to vote. Regards, Lisa Souza. I believe face masks should be a personal choice. In this town, if this town can't even match standards set by the county, I will continue to shop out of town. Turlock can have my tax money. Signed, um, Tracy Marquez. City officials, what is the endgame? When are we fully open without masks? Social distancing, et cetera? I saw that there are more cases of COVID-19 in Merced County. Well, flatten the curve does not mean less cases. It means they are being postponed. Is the plan to wear masks, social distance, for the rest of our lives? I would also like these two questions answered, please. Where is the reputable medical science and evidence that supports healthy people wearing masks and not links to CDC or State Health Board, the actual science? How much money are you receiving from the state and federal government in emergency aid because of COVID-19? Are you funded more money because of the tighter restrictions like mandating masks? Thank you, Brooke Lopez. Good afternoon. I write in support of continuing the city ordinance requiring face masks. On June 9th, this council voted to require the wearing of masks for anyone in City Hall. If you deem it important to protect the health of city employees, it follows that the same protective measures should be used citywide. On June 9th, the county health director presented the board of supervisors with the most recent COVID-19 update. He stressed the importance that all local leaders share the same message, that masks are imperative to the success of containing the spread of the virus. On June 14th, Dr. Jerome Adams, the United States Surgeon General tweeted, "Some feel face coverings infringe on their freedom of choice. But if more wear them, we'll have more freedom to go out. Face coverings, less symptomatic viral spread, more places open and sooner. Exercise and promote your freedom by choosing to wear a face covering. Merced County continues to see rapidly increasing numbers of positive cases. Please continue the masking ordinance to minimize the infection rate in Los Banas. Thank you, Tricia Campos." Mayor Mike Valalta and city council members, I am writing this letter concerning the executive order 2020-01 that the city adopted on April 14th, 2020. I am aware that since the adoption of this executive order, some of the restrictions have been changed to eliminate the five customer per a thousand square feet, as well as the one person per cart rule. The city should make wearing a mask recommendation, not a requirement. However, if a business owner chooses to require that their patrons wear a mask, such as Costco requires, I believe that is totally up to the business owner. No other cities in our county are requiring face masks. If you look at Gustine and Dos Palos, they haven't required face masks and their numbers haven't increased. I believe the city has done their job in educating the citizens who live and work here. We all know that the best way to prevent COVID-19 is to avoid being exposed. Practice social distancing. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Wash your hands often for at least twenty seconds. Avoid touching your face and stay home if you are sick. I also believe that ne, that now you need to give the citizens the choice whether or not to wear a mask while they are doing business in our city. Does the city even have an exit plan for these restrictions? Sincerely, Leo Gilardi. Council members, on June 7th, the World Health Organization released the following guidance. Non-medical fabric masks are being used by many, many people in the public areas, but there has been limited evidence on their effectiveness and who does not recommend their widespread use among the public for control of COVID-19. With regards to exercise, the WHO released the following guidance on June 16th. People should not wear masks when exercising, as masks may reduce the ability to breathe comfortably. Sweat can make the mask become wet more quickly, which makes it difficult to breathe and promotes the growth of microorganisms. The important preventative measure during exercises to maintain physical distance of at least one meter from others. During the eighty-four-day mandated shutdown, CrossFit Valley View was rebuilt to maximize social distancing. Athletes currently maintain ten feet of distance between themselves while exercising over three times the distance recommended by the WHO. Requiring masks to be worn inside all of, of all businesses is against the advice of public health experts and will put our clients and staff at additional risk. We encourage this council to vote in accordance with the recommendations made by WHO, which clearly states that masks should not be required to be worn in all businesses. Sincerely, Jennifer Correa and Gracianna Rubio, owners of CrossFit Valley View. Why is Los Banas one of the only cities around where a mask isn't completely optional? Take away the mask requirement. Alicia Rojas. Mayor and mayor council members and citizens of Los Banas, after many emails, calls, trying to get information on the emergency COVID ordinance, I discovered a few alarming facts. One, the ordinance was introduced because the city manager did not like the COVID numbers that were being given to him by the government. It was his opinion that they were too low because we have a Bay Area influence. Two, as of two weeks ago, there were not any targets, goals, that if achieved would warrant termination of the ordinance. There was never any endpoint in mind, so after my letter is read, I ask the city council or mayor to explain to the city what are the criteria to remove the mask. I keep hearing we think the masks are working. So do you support making masks permanent in LB for the safety of the citizens? Three, I have been hearing decisions are being made using science. See my first point. Almost every time I have offered scientific facts on the negatives of masks, negatives of masks, they have fallen on deaf ears. The subject was usually changed. It is my belief, many have chosen to believe information based on their individual opinions. You cannot ignore all the other towns in our area and state that are doing fine without masks. Four, businesses are hurting more because of the mask requirements. Many people have chosen to shop out of town because they don't have mask requirements. People have walked out of restaurants because they have to wear a mask to walk in and out, yet it is okay to sit down for an hour without one. I am an educated adult. I can decide if I want to patronize a business or not without a mask. If you aren't comfortable without a mask, by all means, wear one. I would like to thank council persons Jones and Johnson Santos for voting against keeping the mask requirements. Please ask, answer the questions I ask. Signed, Mark Vieira. And I think I saw an email come through prior to four o'clock. Let me just check my email real quick. Yeah, there is one. Um, it's a short one. It says, "Please keep masks required as cases are on the rise still. Thank you, Cindy Roloffs."
Yeah, actually, I got a... Some of the council members and... Anyone that really wants to be safe, go ahead and open these up. So, everybody can see your face, it is easier to talk, and it actually protects you from us non-mask wearers and spreading any droplets that may get into your eyes. These are brand new, never been worn, and I have plenty of them to pass around. If you're not willing to wear these, don't make the public wear masks. Let it be the stores that dictate who they let in, whether they mandate masks or no masks, and let's get this back to normal. That's all.
Anyone else want to talk? Mrs. Lewis?
I'll remove, remove my mask, uh, out of respect for the one person who said that they had a difficult time hearing us. I was one of the ones that voted to keep the masks, and there are several reasons. Yeah, the mask isn't to protect you, it's to protect other people from you and from what might expel from your mouth when you talk. Um, and we all expel droplets when we talk. It's, it's the nature of speaking, and depending on what language you speak, you may expel more droplets than others. Um, one of the things that really concerns me in regards to the county and, and, you know, Alex made this presentation that, uh, they moved from, uh, daily reports to once a, once a week because there was staff burnout. But I've noticed over the past several, at least, at least a month, I've been finding a lot of errors in the adding up of numbers on these county reports. So, it, you know, I don't know if, if it's because people just aren't double-checking their figures, and if that's part of the burnout, but it, it, it brings me concern as a citizen of this county as to whether or not what the county is giving you is accurate information. Now, I, I know we've gotten a lot of, of, uh, concern from our citizens of Los Banas about not wanting to wear masks. I have an email from a Don Guerrero that, uh, was sent today saying, "To all, it is being, it is, it's been annoying to have to wear a mask in the city, but I believe it has saved lives in our city." So, yes, you know, it is annoying to wear a mask. I don't like to wear a mask, but I'm thinking about my fellow citizen out there, um, that I'm not gonna pass something on to them. Now, I, I don't believe that I'm sick, and I, I think most people don't believe that they're sick. Um, I, and I'm reaching far out here because I, I, on the news, I heard a couple of the young people who've been out there demonstrating, they, they didn't wear masks and, you know, they just had the sniffles. And they went and got tested and found out they had COVID. So, different people are symptomatic in different ways. Not everybody runs a fever or has the symptoms that the CDC says that you, you have when, you know, you're displaying that you may have COVID. Um, I, I have concerns about our seniors, you know, uh, and the people who have medical conditions out there who don't have a voice in this. And, um, I guess, you know, if this council decides to pass not wearing masks... if this council decides to pass not wearing masks anymore, that they have to be careful about shopping. I don't, you know, I struggle to believe that everybody is leaving town to go shopping because I see a lot of cars in our businesses, you know, and I realize that the big boxes in our downtown is going to come back. I went downtown today to seek some information from a provider of services, and that particular person said, you know, they thought things before the virus that they weren't going to be able to survive. But since the virus, his business has, you know, just phenomenally picked up. So, you know, there's six on one, a half dozen the other. There are people who believe that the virus has a significant the virus and covering their face has significant value. As far as the World Health Organization and the CDC are concerned, one day they tell you the mask is good, the next day they tell you it's not good. So, you know, they're not that credible either, and it's all based on some theories of formulas that they have out there, you know, not based on sure evidence. But the one thing we do know is that when people do wear masks, it does slow the virus down. It's uncomfortable. I think that's the big issue that people feel is the uncomfortableness of wearing the mask. Me personally, you know, I don't feel that my rights are being taken away because I have to wear a mask. I feel like I'm trying to help my fellow citizens in Los Banos by doing it, by protecting them away from what may come out of my mouth. So, and then again, you know, the self-certification. Alex, can you tell me, are businesses required with, under the county self-certification to post that so that residents are able to read that?
Under the county?
Yes.
Under the county order, there is not a requirement for self-certification. That's a requirement that, actually, we came up with at the staff level that we presented to the council. So that certification would be in addition to the county order.
Okay, so right now, with no self-certification and doing away with X amount of people in a business, there's no real way of governing how many people go in. Even though the state of California still has social distancing in place, there's nothing to stop a business to just let droves of people go in at any one particular time. Is that what you're saying?
The county order does not have a specific formula in regard to social distancing and number of customers per square foot. The county order requires businesses to implement social distancing based on, I think, six feet separation, but it does not contain that formulaic approach like we had.
But isn't there something for certain businesses that could only be at a certain capacity?
Certain industries, yes.
Yes, certain industries have to can only like dine-in. It has a formula to, you know, how many people they can put in. They can't be at full capacity, churches, other things that came from the state and the county, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Lewis. Did that answer your question? Thank you.
Yeah, it helps. I, you know, I just have some real concerns about this. And again, I know this council, you know, whatever, however they go, I'm not going to raise a stink about it, but I have my reservations about this. The other thing that we don't have any clear information on is there's only one place in our county where there's testing done, and that's in the City of Merced at the county fair. You have to make a reservation in order to be tested. I can only, you know, I don't know for sure, but I would assume that when someone calls for a reservation to make, to be tested, do they only ask them for their name or is there other information that they have to give them?
I can only go based on my personal experience. I've registered for testing. I think I provided name and insurance information, but that was, for the most part, all I recall.
So they didn't ask you what city you were from or anything like that?
You do have to provide ID when you check in, so there is some level of checking ID.
Okay, so...
Mrs. Lewis, if I might, the last conference call with the mayors, I asked that specific question. Didn't they say, Alex, they were going to provide us with that? They wanted some time to sort it out?
Yes, I think the mayor, Mr. Mayor, you did make that request for data based on address. So the county should be providing that to us at some point.
And there lies my concern. You know, this should have been something the minute that testing site opened up, that the county should have been able to provide to the cities and in that report to let us know what portion of our community is going over to Merced to be tested. I mean, we could have very few people going over there, and therefore, our numbers are showing very low. Whereas on the Merced side, their numbers are high. And based on population, you know, if you do the math, we're not that far behind Merced at all as far as numbers and who has the COVID. So, you know, I'm not happy with what the county of Merced has provided us as far as information in those reports, the mistakes that they make in their numbers, the lack of concern to provide that information upfront. You know, that's just kind of common sense. And then, you know, to just kind of, you know, cut us off at the knees and say, "We're only going to get this report once a week", to leave us in the dark for six days, waiting for that seventh day to figure out where we are. Burnout, I don't accept that. I don't accept that. That's a cop-out, in my opinion. And our staff works just as hard trying to accomplish the things that need to be accomplished. And we're not relieving them for burnout. So, you know, I'm a bit disappointed with the county and the services that they provided to us through these reports and to be more proactive about disseminating information to us. And, you know, with that and what I hear on the news nationally regarding the CDC and the World Health Organization, and constantly, even now, not, you know, in California, cases are rising. They're rising more in certain other states, but they're still rising here, and hospitalizations are rising. So whatever course this council decides to take, I'll stand behind it. But I will encourage people out there who prefer to wear masks for their own safety and for the safety of others, not just themselves, but for the safety of others. Please do so. And I'd also like to encourage people in the community, please, don't point your finger at people or try to accuse them because they are wearing a mask for whatever reasons. We don't know what their reasons are, why they want to continue to wear masks. We don't know their health conditions. We don't know if they're diabetic. We don't know if they have heart problems. We don't know what their circumstances are. So let's just be kind to people as we move forward in this pandemic because there is no cure for COVID virus at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I'm going to add something that's going to put another frown on your face, and that is that the testing center may be going away as of June 30th. And we were advised of that. Unless they renew the contract with Optum, the testing center will be disbanded by June 30th. Is that also correct, Alex, of what we heard?
Sorry, there's a process here taking the mask off. So we did hear from county staff that that state-funded testing site, the contract for that operation only runs through the end of this month, June 30th. They're looking at other options to continue testing, but at least that particular contract with that source of funding, that contract runs out at the end of the month.
So with that, is there ever going to be or is there discussion about bringing a testing site to Los Banos?
There is. We are working on that. We have been working with that since, whenever that was, several weeks ago. We heard there would not be a second testing site through the governor's kind of testing desert, I think he referred to them as. Since then, we have been working on an alternative to standing up a testing site. We're continuing to work on that. I would like to report that it's absolutely going to open, but I'm just, we're just not there yet. But we are working on that, and we continue to work on that.
All right, thank you.
They basically want us to find the money to staff it. All right. Yes, I'm right now. I have Mr. Freya next, and then I'll, I promise. I won't cut you off. Mr. Freya.
Thanks. Do they see perhaps that the COVID testing would get to the point like we have TB testing? The Health Department has COVID tests just the way we test for TB now? It would seem to me to be the common sense future approach. Have they mentioned anything like that, getting to that point?
Again, what I can say based on my personal experience that the current testing site in Merced County, at least for me, relatively easy to register for. I registered on the same day I took the test or took the swab. I also read, I think, on the website or somewhere that you could just walk it. They were doing walk-up registration as well. So at least that site in Merced County did have capacity for same-day registration, walk-up registration. So last I heard, it was relatively readily available in the City of Merced.
City of Merced.
Correct.
But we see it in our Health Department office here. It would seem to be the common sense approach. They don't have to pay to open up any other center. They have the Health Department.
I mean, we're actively working to bring a testing site here. Just not ready to announce that we're firm and there yet.
Thank you. I appreciate you working on that, too. Comment regarding masks? We're fighting an enemy we've never faced. We're facing, we're in an unknown situation. We've never faced it. We've gotten so complacent with the fact that modern American medical technology can cure, has been able to cure so much. We don't have to worry about polio anymore, tetanus, measles, mumps, rubella. Heck, pneumonia used to be a death sentence. Not anymore. So what's happened is we've gotten so accustomed to the Health Department, the music, no, music, medical, the medical field. I mean, we get sick, doctor gives us a prescription, and most of the time it gets fixed. You get a body part gets broken. Surgery has gotten so sophisticated now, they can go in and fix it. And we've gotten so accustomed to that. Now, nature has thrown us a curveball. This is, and if you're familiar with the polio outbreaks back in the 40s, before the vaccine came in the 50s, you realize the iron lung, the breathing machine, was invented for that. And people were doing all they could to prevent the spread of the thing, but they really didn't understand how to prevent it. We look back at the flu epidemic of 1918. People wore masks. It's all they could do. Three-quarters of the commentary we get from the public is get rid of the mask or make it optional. And the enigma, the paradox, the difficulty there, looking for the better word, is that the mask is to protect the rest of the world from me, not me from the rest of the world, primarily. And so I'm very, very torn by how to approach this. Just based on my personal judgment, I want to keep the mask order in place another two weeks. We saw a sharp spike this past week. Memorial Day and the demonstrations, people have a lot of contact with each other, and boom, up it went again. I want to see an end to this thing as much as anyone. But it may take longer. We've gotten so accustomed to being able to fix things so fast. And I think of my, you know, we talk, Tom Brokaw in his book, The Greatest Generation. They endured a 10-year depression followed by a four-year war that killed a third of a million Americans. That was a 20-year ordeal, essentially, by the time the war was all blown out and cleaned up and finished. Right now, this has been a six-month ordeal. And it's a pain in the neck. But I, for one, am willing to make this little sacrifice for a while. And, Mr. Jones, with all due respect, this isn't going to make anything normal. Thank you.
Mrs. Santos. Oh, let's try this one.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have to say, from the beginning, I thought that having the mask, due to our dynamics, as I believe I've said in the past, due to our dynamics here in Los Banos, I believe that having the mask on was of the utmost importance. And I think, I personally don't mind wearing the mask. But I have to say, from what we're hearing from majority of our residents, they want to take the masks off. I have to say, as a group, we vote. I mean, me and Mr. Jones may have been a little bit irked by the last meeting, but we voted that majority rules as a council. So we said that, we'll go with it. But currently, majority is saying that they do not wish for these masks or they wish for them to be optional. As I said, I don't mind wearing the mask. From the beginning, I always said that if I'm helping one person, it's great. But the majority of the residents in town are stating that they do not wish to have these on. They wish for these to be optional. And I think we should listen. I personally think we should listen, and I completely understand. I think everyone has points as to what's, why they wish for the mask to be on or on or not. But currently, the people are asking for us to make it optional, and I think that is something we should also do. And if I may add in, I spoke to a resident for quite some time just the other day, and she stated that, I guess, there was some phrasing on our website or on the PD website about saying it is, "While it is likely that masks will still be worn, we will be discussing it." She felt that there was no choice in the matter. So that is one thing I felt like I should bring up for her. As for, I feel, though, if people wish to wear their masks, please, by all means, and like Deborah said, no one should be made fun of that. That is their choice, and they should be allowed that choice. But I do think that we should listen to the majority and that we should make these masks optional. So, thank you.
Well, for me, it's, I've gone back and forth and back and forth on this for days. But I have to tell you, I've been looking all these weeks from the county for direction other than telling us, "Good job, Los Banos", for implementing the masks. Well, if it's such a good job in Los Banos, I mean, I could accept that for a while. But it's bothering me that the people with higher degrees than I have not made any recommendations other than face coverings are strongly suggested. So with me, I look to the county. And the county hasn't made any changes. But then in public, they say, "Los Banos, good job, good job." Well, if it's such a good job, then why aren't they enacting the strict regulations that Los Banos had? So regardless of the vote today, I'm going to be wearing a face mask because I believe in them. But as far as we're not getting any backup anymore as to what we've done in the past, I've accepted that. And I know I'm a little disjointed in what I'm saying, but I thought it was a good idea. I thought the masks were a good idea. I still believe, personally, I believe that they're a good idea. But it's gotten to the point that if the county... point that if the county comes out and they say, we want to make these mandatory, then I'm looking for more backup. But right now, I don't have that. So, with that, I'm going to call for a roll call vote. And a yes vote means that we are going to go back to the county order with the masks, which means that masks will be optional, except for, and I want to be really clear, except for the state and county orders for those businesses that are required to have masks in their business. Is that clear enough, Alex?
I think the motion really is to rescind 2020-01, if that's what you're attempting to do. So, a yes vote would be to rescind 2020-01, or you could do it in the opposite. A yes vote would be to continue 2021. That's how I'd like you to phrase it.
But-
As opposed to masks, no masks. 2020-01 requires masks. If you rescind 2020-01, it will default to the strongly recommended, strong recommendation of the county. If you vote in favor of the resolution, then it will continue with requiring the masks. So, if you can phrase it in such a way that it's centered upon 2020-01.
Okay. So, what about the other areas of 2020-01 that we gave you direction on?
Well, 2020-01, as Alex indicated, deals with mandatory face masks in businesses. It deals with, it deals with the number of folks in a business, which if you vote to rescind it, that'll be gone. But you already voted, your direction was to rescind that.
Yes.
So, essentially, rescinding 2020-01 gets you back to the default, which is the county order of strongly encouraging.
But we also made the recommendation for face masks at City Hall and for the council chambers. Is that just-
That would be, that's a true statement. And if you wanted to continue that, I would see that as a separate motion to continue that.
Okay.
So, you could-
Okay.
You could do a number of things. You can vote to maintain 2020-01, which is the direction that was given at the last meeting.
Okay.
You could vote to rescind 2020-01, which then, what that means is the city has no order in terms of masks, et cetera.
Okay.
And you could have a companion motion that, in terms of City Hall and city businesses, that masks could be required.
Okay. So, by rescinding 2020-01, that takes care of the face mask issue, and then we'd have a separate vote for the, for the City Hall and council chambers. Is that correct?
If that's what the pleasure of the council is.
Okay. Everyone's going to get to talk here. Okay. Mr. Jones, you can go first.
So, I would like to make this motion to remove Executive Order 2020-1 in full. And then, if you guys want to add back on face masks in city councils, in city council chambers and City Hall, that's completely separate.
That's what he said, yeah.
Okay. I just didn't want to make it in one motion for both.
Right. So, that would be the cleanest way, if that's the way you're going to vote. The other clean way is to vote to extend 2020-01.
And if it's rescinded, then we go back to the county order that makes masks-
Strongly, strongly encourage, except for specifics, businesses and situations. They have a list of 50 of them.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not an expert on every single-
You understand that.
Recommendation for every single business.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes. Well, I was going to get some clarification on 2021, because we have four bullet points here in regards to 2021. Of those four bullet points, it has nothing to do with masks at City Hall. Is that something that we need to put on the agenda?
No, we're going to add it after the vote.
No, I'm asking the city attorney.
Your direction at the last meeting for 2020-01 was to add those things to 2020-01.
Okay. So, then-
So, that was done. That is in, that is in the amendment to 2020-01 before you tonight.
Okay. So, that should have actually been added on here as well?
Well, maybe on the staff report.
Yeah, on the staff report, yeah.
It is in the staff report on-
What page?
But understand, if we rescind this, we have to add those back in. That's what I'm getting at.
Well, if it's in the staff report-
You have to make the motion to add it back in.
Yes.
So, I'm trying to figure out where in the staff report. Well, okay, I see bullet.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if you still need clarification, Councilmember Lewis, it's page three of the staff report, bottom of the page, the second bullet.
Page three, one, two.
That last sentence in this, in that second bullet.
So, there are actually six bullets to this order, not four. Is that what you're saying?
The five.
Because you have the city social distancing and sanitation protocol, which was replaced by the county, and then you have the city face coverings required, which is not a part of Section A. This was Section B. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify it in my mind. Which one of these are we trying to rescind? Are we rescinding A and B executive order, or how is this working?
All of it in full. Everything related to 2020-1. And then, anything else that we feel that needs to be put back on, we would make a new motion for it.
But they were, they were, 2020-point-one, 2020-1, the original order was April the 14th, and then we had this subsequent order on April the 3rd.
That's just an amendment for 2021.
So, again, the last city council meeting, you gave staff direction to amend 2020-01 on all of the things that you gave us direction on at that city council meeting, which included getting rid of the one shopping cart per adult, getting rid of the five per thousand, adding back in, masks would be required at City Hall and in the city council. And so, all of those things are included in the amendment, in addition to the requirement to wear masks in all open businesses within the city of Los Banos. So, the amendment that's before you in the resolution would do all of those things that you gave us direction to do at the last meeting. What Mr. Jones is suggesting is rescinding all of 2021, which would be, in my mind, rescinding all of that direction as well that you gave us at the last meeting. And then, you're starting with kind of a clean slate in terms of anything else that you want to continue. That would be the cleanest way to do it, as opposed to picking and choosing what you're going to vote on in terms of 2020-01, as I see it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I have a motion on the floor for rescinding 2020-01. Wait a minute.
Put your mic on. Okay?
Including the direct, including the direction that was given at the last meeting.
No. So, if that happens, then we, then the five bullet points for face masks, one cart, person per cart, which we rescinded, it was in 2021, or 2020, and then the five per thousand, which we said we wanted to rescind. So, we'd need two separate motions after that for the city and the council chambers?
If you wish to continue that.
If you wish to continue that. Okay.
So-
Oh, go ahead.
So, Bill, if there's some, within those four bullet points, if there's some issues that we don't have, if we don't have issues with some of them, but maybe one or two or whatever, what we've done in the past is separated them out and voted on them. How, you know, how do we handle this now?
That's what we're going to do after this.
So, again, the, one of the approaches would be to wipe it out completely, and then to go back, and anything that you want to include, to continue with, you do it by separate motion. So, for instance, you would wipe it out completely, but someone could make a motion to continue face masks in city buildings, for instance. And then, that would be, that's what you would have. You would have the, Merced County as the default, but in the city of Los Banos, in the city of Los Banos, public buildings, face masks would continue to be required.
And also, you would go back and create a new executive order for any motions placed after, and it would be a new executive order number. Is that correct?
Actually, this would be a resolution by the city council. It wouldn't need an executive order. It would be your order. But we could do it that way as well.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Jones, does your motion still stand?
It is.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay. It's been motion by Jones, second by Johnson Santos, to rescind 2020-01. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let the record reflect, three to two, that 2020-01 has been rescinded. Now, do I have additional motions that someone would like to make? In reference to the City Hall and the council chambers, one at a time. Go ahead, Ms. Faria.
Thank you, Mayor. I was waiting for you to recognize me.
I'm sorry.
Formally, no problem.
I didn't see your lips move.
Now you can.
Okay.
I would like to move to keep masks in place for City Hall. And I include council chambers. Do we need a separate?
Yes.
Need a separate motion for the council chamber? It's all City Hall.
We've kind of been City Hall and public buildings, and we've been kind of keeping the chambers as a separate-
Separate entity. Okay.
Yeah, because it's really not open to the public yet.
Okay. So, at City Hall, keep the masks. I would move to keep the masks.
City Hall and other city buildings, like the community center.
All city buildings.
There you go.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been motion by Faria, second by Lewis, to retain masks as mandatory in all city buildings. Is that clear enough? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay. So, let the record reflect. The vote was four to one in favor of mandatory masks for all city, all city buildings. Clear enough? Okay. Mr. Faria?
And then, the next is for City Hall?
Yes.
City, the chambers.
City council chambers.
Council chambers.
Yes.
Move to keep the masks mandatory in council chambers.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
It's motion by Faria to retain the masks as mandatory in the council chambers, and second by Lewis. Is that correct? All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay. Let the record reflect a vote of three to two in favor of mandatory masks in the council chambers. Anything else? Bill, are we okay?
Unless there's something else you want to vote on.
No. Anybody want to vote on anything else?
I may.
Yes, you sure may. Let's see. Try that.
Just for, and I understand what everybody said, oh, excuse me, everyone said about clarification on which ones. But I under, if I may, for Ms. Lewis, I know there wasn't a part of the ordinance that you wanted to bring back up. I mean, mine is masks and whatnot, but there was a part of the ordinance you wanted to bring back up, such as, like, how many people within square feet, was it? Or was it a certain part of it that you wished to bring up?
No, I was just merely making a point.
Okay.
You know, that in my discuss with the county, and that we had a perfectly good social distancing ordinance here in our city, and now, there's nothing. So, that's the point that I was trying to make. No, I have no plans on trying to bring that back up for a vote.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
The council has made its point, and I will stand with it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, we have covered the COVID-19 status update, and we have covered A, City Council Resolution Number 6223. So, do we need to vote on 6223, or we took care of that to rescind 2020?
No, you essentially rescinded.
Okay. So, we're good on seven and seven eight?
Correct.
All right. So, I wanted to hear before I moved on. Okay. Let's go on to item eight, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the appropriation limitation for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. And item 8A1, City Council Resolution Number 6230, setting the tax-related appropriation limit in compliance with Proposition 4 and Proposition 111 for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
The GAN appropriation limit sets a spending limit for the amount that the city can legally tax the citizens of Los Banos. Annually, we are required to bring this amount. That is set forth to you in the staff report to the council meetings. We are supposed to select the population and inflation factors, hold a public hearing, and then ultimately include this appropriations information within our budgets. This year's appropriation amount is $98,088,600. What that means is that we cannot tax the citizens of Los Banos in excess of that money. Currently, we are taxing them at approximately $18 million, which is 19% of the limitation. So, tonight, what we're looking for is for you to hold the public hearing and adopt the resolution setting both the population and inflation options, and ultimately adopting the resolution that outlines the appropriation limitation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Should we take a two-minute break? Or pause?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
So there was very little to my presentation. What I was asking is that we hold a public hearing.
Sure, sure. At 5:24, Mrs. Santos had to, had to leave, and she is no longer part of our meeting. You're welcome.
So again, I'm asking council to hold a public hearing concerning the appropriations limitation, select the population and inflation options that are outlined in the staff report and adopt the resolution related to the appropriations limitation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does council have any questions at this time? All right, I would now like to open the public hearing on city council resolution number two six two three zero. Is there anyone who wishes to speak or do we have any comments? Thank you. Okay, so there are no comments regarding city council resolution number six two three zero. Hey, do I have a motion? Any other comments by council? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, let's see, where am I here? Resolution number six two three zero as read by title.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Freya for the approval of resolution number six two three zero. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item B, public hearing. To receive public comment, consideration the 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget. Director Williams?
Thank you. So I did put, place a package in front of your chairs. The first page, the city of Los Banos changes from budget workshop. This packet includes any changes that we made from June 4th, when we first presented to the budget to council. The first page is a summary of all the changes that we made and what fund it pertains to. Starting on the second page is the summary of the fund balance. And then you get into the individual sheets. So these are actual sheets that should replace the corresponding sheets that are already in your budget workbook. So, but we'll get into these changes in the presentation. But the information is there if you need to refer to it. So tonight, what we're going to look at is a budget overview. Instead of going in great detail like we did on June 4th, we'll just present a summary version of this. So no, Mr. Freya, I don't have 45 slides.
You don't have what?
I don't have 45 slides like last night.
Oh, you disappoint me.
I'm sorry. I'll give you a summary of all the expenditures, any adjustments that were made following the workshop. We'll discuss the salary schedule changes. And then we'll touch on the capital improvement project summary, which was also included.
Get the laptop on the screen.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Mayor, I do have a presentation. I should have mentioned that. I'm following along myself.
We're getting there. All right, one, two, three. There we go.
So this is an overview of the general fund revenues. And it's breaking it down by percentage of how we collect revenues. So property taxes are the second largest. They're at 37%. The reason why they appear to be the largest on this graph is because for visual purposes, I split out sales tax from measure H sales tax. So as you remember, measure H is a sales tax. I just split them out so we could see the difference in collecting it. So sales tax revenue is 4.8 million or 26% of our budget. Measure H is 13% of our budget or 22.5 million. Property taxes is 37% of the budget, approximately 6,000. I'm sorry, 6 million, 6.9 million dollars. And then we have the smaller revenue sources that are all lumped together here. Charges for service, which are approximately 1.8 million. Other revenue sources, which amount to 1.2 million. Licenses and permits, which is 4% or $765,000. So that's just a small breakdown of the general fund revenues. Overall, the anticipated revenues are $19,081,841, which is a decrease of 1.2 million over the current year. And we did discuss some of those decreases. The main decreases include the anticipated decline in sales tax revenue due to COVID. And we're estimating that to be at approximately 4%. The summary of expenditures, so citywide expenditure increases include employee salaries and benefits. Employee salaries that will be increased are just status quo. So anybody who has a merit increase allotted to them, it's not a guarantee, but it is budgeted that way because they're, they may be able to get it. We do still have an MOU with the Public Works Bargaining Unit. So there is a 3% COLA increase built in for that bargaining group in here as well. And then we had an increase to health insurance benefits. We anticipated a small increase of 6%. However, we won't receive the actual rates until July 15th, I believe the date was. Electricity and gas, we are anticipating a 7% increase to overall through the budget. Liability insurance, we're also expecting a small increase. And then communications or the phone system phase two, that was built into the budget citywide as well. Some of the decreases that we made overall to the budget were travel and training. And this again was because of COVID. We aren't sure what to expect. We do have estimates and declines, but we, we anticipate that maybe our numbers might be off and it could potentially be worse. So as we've discussed in the past, some of the decreases that we made were to travel and training, to part time employees. And we've cut back or put on hold some of our capital projects and some of our equipment needs. Summary of expenditures for measure H. So again, this budget, we kept relatively tight. But just to go over a few things, police includes six police officers, four of which are currently filled at this time. That's good news for us. That, those six police officers trigger a sergeant being funded. So this year, we are also funding that sergeant. That is also one of the changes that we added into the budget since the workshop. So you'll see on that summary sheet that I mentioned at the beginning, police measure H, and there's an addition of 87,696 to salaries for the sergeant position, 54,135 to benefits, and then 1,000 or 18,187 to benefits per. And that's all for the cost related to hiring the sergeant. So that's new included in the budget. Obviously, that's been there, but we haven't funded it before because we did say that we wouldn't fund that position until we were able to fill all six positions. And we do believe that we're really close to doing that. So we went ahead and funded that position now. Code enforcement includes, let me catch up here with my, code enforcement includes one filled position. Firefighters or fire expenditures include two firefighter positions, which are both currently filled. Also, we built in costs to replace the AEDs, which are, like you see one here at city hall. Those are the things that revive you if you're having a heart attack. So we're replacing those at a cost of $5,200. The recreation fund includes one recreation coordinator. As we previously discussed, that position is currently in the budget. However, it is furloughed and it won't be brought back until such time that we can bring back recreation programs. And it also includes different equipment needs for recreation, like city park rehab at $80,000, Talbot Park slide replacement at $8,000, and a turf aerator at $38,000. We did hold a measure H committing meeting on June 10th. And it was recommended by the committee members that we recommend to council the expenditures as presented by staff. So they agree with the way that we built the budget. General fund adjustments, these are the adjustments that we've made to the general fund since the budget workshop. We looked into Mrs. Lewis's request regarding replacing the seven chairs at the dais. And that's estimated to cost $3,000. That's 750 to the general fund. It's distributed the way that your salaries are distributed. So it's 25% to the general fund and 25% to water, sewer, and garbage each. So $750 increase to the general fund here. In measure H, as I mentioned, we are increasing measure H by $160,018 to add that police sergeant in. We did find an error in fire, in the fire expenditures for measure H. We did not include the liability insurance at a cost of $5,498. It was incorrectly in the general fund portion of the fires budget. So we reduced it from general fund fire and included it in measure H fire. So basically, that's just a wash. And then other things that we decreased were the revenues. We did find out that the 5,000 grant that we get from Walmart annually, that we weren't going to be rewarded that grant this year. And I believe that's the Cups for Kids program. And so we do still have that expenditure in the budget. It was included with the last workshop. We still will be doing that. It just will not be funded by Walmart any longer. It will be funded by the city. If any grants come up, we'll still apply for them. But at this time, the way it's built into the budget is to pay for it with city funding.
Is that the money that you?
Wait, 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 wait.
To take the children shopping?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So those are the increases that we've made to the general fund since the budget workshop. Also, a question from council member Lewis. You did ask about the lobbyist. And we discussed where the breakdown for that was. It is not in professional services. It is under consulting services. It also is split four ways. It is split between the general fund and the three enterprise funds, water, wastewater, and solid waste. 61% goes to the general fund and 13% each goes to each of the enterprise funds. We have spent a total of $100,000 over the last four years. So in 2018, when we started it in August, it cost us approximately $22,000. In 2019, we spent almost $25,000. In 2020, we're estimated to spend the year out, to end the year at $26,000. And we have budgeted for this current budget, $27,527. We did get, with their aid, we did receive $5 million to help build that, the new fire station. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of that. But I did want to provide you with this breakdown since you asked about it during the workshop. And again, it is included 61% in the general fund budget and then 13% in each of the enterprise funds. So just to give a brief summary of our general fund expenditures, this is broken down by department. So you can see how much of the general fund each department gets. Police, the police department gets 59%. The fire department gets 11%. Admin gets 8%. Community and economic development get five, gets 5%. Maintenance gets 4%. Recreation gets 6%. Engineering gets 1%. Building gets 3%. And code enforcement gets 3% of the overall budget. And, and the total expenditures including, I'm sorry, the total expenditures including measure H is going to be approximately $19 million. This is another breakdown of the same information comparing from year to year, just so you can kind of see the rollover budget that we did with the cutbacks. The, the chart on the left is what we were budgeting for this fiscal year 2021. And the chart on the right is what we budgeted for the current fiscal year 2020. 75% of our budget this year is going to personnel services. So that is salary benefits. 68% went to it last year. So we do have an increase there. The decreases, because that increase, the decreases came out of capital outlay and supplies and services. The largest decrease was to capital outlay. We dropped from having an 8% of our budget to 2%. And that's just some of the sacrifices we, we made so we could do this rollover budget. The personnel costs are something that we don't necessarily have control over or complete control over. And then supplies and services, that's where we put travel and training. So that 1% cut that you see there is due to the reduction in those costs.
So our general fund without measure H, what, 16.5?
Yeah, on the summary page, yes, it's 16.5. Yes. So balancing the budget, and that, these numbers do not include measure H. And the reason that we back measure H out is because even though it is a general fund revenue, technically because of the expenditure plan, the, the funding is considered assigned. So revenues excluding measure H are anticipated to be 16.7 million. Expenditures are 16.5 million, which leaves us a surplus of approximately $86,000. And that means that we're in the black. We're not dipping into our reserves to balance the budget. If there was room to spend additional money, that's it. Your $86,000 that we have here. And we are really close to being fully staffed for the first time with the police department in several years. So we're anticipating that we'll get relatively close to this number unless we come back with additions.
So our reserves are 13?
Yeah, we're about to get to that, that page. The, the reserves, as you mentioned, are on the far right where it says unassigned. These are things that are not committed, restricted, or assigned for any purpose. And that's 13 million. However, within that 13 million, the council has the 30% reserve, which is mandated by council. That leaves our unassigned fund balance at approximately 5.5 million. The committed funds, which is also a separate fund balance, include fire fleet. So we had set aside funding two years in a row for fire. That amounted to a little over $200,000. And then we set aside money when we contracted to do the general plant update. And all that's remaining after this year would be $7,357. Assigned funding includes community and economic development projects of 145,000. At the beginning, we, when the RDA was first dissolved, we took some money and set it aside so we can finish some projects. And we've spent a lot of that money. We're left at 145,000. General capital set aside is 1.4 million. Safety capital set aside is 1.9 million. The purse is 2 million. And measure H at the end of the year is anticipated to be 2.5 million. So that's a summary of the general fund. And I'd like to talk about the expenditures, just an overview of some of the special, special revenue funds. We have built into this budget city hall improvements phase one. So just a reminder, phase one is to do the counters and the protective glassing where the plexiglass is now, except for it would go all the way up to.
What's the timeline on that?
I, we do not have a timeline currently on that. We have a bid that we're looking at, but we haven't approved it yet. So there is currently no timeline on that.
All right.
Measure P, they have purchased their training towers. So we built into the budget installation for the, the training tower. In the capital improvement fire, we built in purchase of a new fire engine. In the park development fund, we built in several projects here, beginning with the park master plan, which is necessary, necessary to complete prior to starting the other projects, such as a splash pad, a dog park, and a skate park lighting. And then for some of the projects in the LLDs or the landscape and lighting districts include shade structures at Ranchwood, playground equipment upgrades at Mission Estates, and irrigation and landscaping at Stone Creek. So a summary of expenditures for our enterprise funds, which are our water, wastewater, and solid waste funds, include increases to professional services, land purchases, master plan, which is different projects for both water and wastewater. We do have a few equipment purchases in here and vehicle purchases. In solid waste, we are still working on the landfill closure off of the old bottle dump off of Mercy Springs Road. And then there's also equipment purchases included in these areas as well. Other adjustments include increases. These are adjustments that we made after. These are adjustments that we made after the budget workshop. And that included increasing the Los Banas Park Fund by $161,700 to both revenue and expense. And that is for a tree master plan grant that we received. And then also, as I previously mentioned, increasing the enterprise funds by $750 to each fund for their portion of replacing the seven chairs in the council chambers. Salary schedule. Included in your staff report was the updated salary schedule for the year. As I previously mentioned, there is a COLA increase built in there for the Public Works Bargaining Group. That was a 3% increase to approximately 39 positions. We were behind one year bargaining with them. So when all other groups got 3 and 3, they ultimately got 0, 3. And now they're, they're kind of playing catch up with their bargaining groups. So that's why it's included here and nobody else's. Minimum wage is mandated to increase to $14 an hour effective January 1st, 2020, 2021. It'll again go up in January 2022. And so that increase is built into the salary schedule. And then finally, position changes. We are asking to add the police sergeant position to the salary schedule, as I mentioned. We would like to make that retroactive to June 16th. So we'd like to start the position as of yesterday. And that's because it was the beginning of the pay period. Did you have a question?
Yes, I did, Ms. Williams.
Yeah.
So what year did we miss out on the 3% COLA for public works?
Um, let's see, 21, 20, I think it was 2019. Yeah, we, they, they were forming their group. And so while they were forming the group, we weren't bargaining yet with them. And then they formed the group. And so we started negotiations and it kind of went over, it crossed over a year. We had already made.
During that time, there was no increases?
Not for them.
Not for them?
Correct. There was for miscellaneous groups and all other bargaining units.
Do we have, and years prior, were they getting 3%?
It fluctuates depending on what we were doing for everybody else. They were part of the miscellaneous bargaining group before they created this group. They just formed this group in 2019.
It seems like to me we probably should look at trying to make up, well, I don't know if we can now, but at some point try to make up that year that they lost out. Because if everybody else got it.
I think that we could talk about that probably when we talk about negotiations. But they're the only group getting something this year at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
And then other changes include removing the IT manager position from the salary schedule. That position was vacated in November 2019. And then removing the IT technician position from the salary schedule, which is a position that is currently furloughed.
Yes. Go ahead, Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you. So right now, we only have one IT person in house?
That's correct.
And then we have the contract.
Yes, we have a contract with Mid Valley IT.
So this furloughed position, is that indefinitely right now?
Yes, I think that we, when we furloughed the position, it was intended to be temporary. But with, with everything that's going on, seeing the workload between Mid Valley and the person that we have doing it, there's, there's no need to increase the staffing.
Okay, thank you.
So tonight, I'm looking for council to hold a public hearing and then adopt a resolution approving the 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget as submitted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Oh, I didn't go over the capital improvement plan. That slide's in the wrong place. Sorry about that. So the capital improvement plan, we'd just like to give a brief summary of what is happening. The dark blue columns show the project's costs. So these are all the wish list projects, all the things that we need to get done. That's how much it's going to cost us. The lighter till green color, that's the funding that we have available. So that first column there with the, the large difference is the general fund. So we're saying that we have over $20 million in projects that need to be completed in the next five years. So again, this is only for a five-year time period. And that our funding is at approximately $5 million. So we have a shortfall of $15 million. And then I put out impact fees, water, wastewater, solid waste. Because water, wastewater, and solid waste are enterprise funds, and the reason we base our rates on projects and equipment needs, those numbers will always be relatively close to each other. And usually, any difference you see is just the timing. We maybe can't get the project done in the same timeframe that we have it for the project costs laid out. So some of the projects that are included here, that are included in the funded portion of this chart, include the new police station. It's not fully funded in this chart. The camera project, again, that's just Phase 1. So we're only talking about $100,000 at this point in time, plus an additional $70,000 for the point-to-point system. The fire station training tower installation is included. City Hall Phase 1 restoration. The splash pad, a portion of the splash pad, not the whole thing, just the design, the dog park, certain street projects, and the landfill closure included in solid waste.
With the splash pad, let's go back just a second.
Okay.
The splash pad and the dog park are going forward within this year, correct?
They're, yes, the, the dog park.
For completion.
And the splash pad are both in here.
Okay.
Because we don't have a location for the splash pad yet, and the design, the full cost of the splash pad is not included in the budget because we don't know what that amount is going to be yet. So we need to do the initial design.
Right, but nothing's going to stop this from being completed, though.
Not that I'm aware of. We'll bring it back to council when we do bid out the project and we have.
No, that, that's park development fees. We have that money.
When we, when we know the cost of the project, we'll bring it back to council to, to do a budget amendment.
And the camera system is $170,000 for this year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I, I did, Mr. Mayor, and maybe the Public Works Director can help me in regard to the timeline for the splash pad. I, I think what we're looking at doing is fully funding the design, looking at the park's master plan, kind of identifying where the sites are for the splash pad, then moving forward to the construction phase. I, I don't know that that can all be completed in the upcoming fiscal year, but we are proposing the design, completion of the park's master plan, and then move forward, moving forward as expeditiously as possible to the construction phase.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So upcoming finance projects, we will be, the auditors will be here in July to hold a preliminary audit. And they'll follow up in October to do the final audit for this current fiscal year. And then as we previously mentioned, we'll be bringing the budget back to council on a regular basis just because of the uncertainty of COVID. And so we're hoping to have a quarterly review in either October or November, and then bringing the mid-year review in January or February, depending, of course, on when property taxes are brought to us by the county. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions by council? Ms. Freya, go ahead.
Yeah, not so much a question, but a comment. Even though we have terrible financial times and we're playing it week by week, month by month, we're still moving forward with all these things we said we're going to do because we've been fiscally responsible. And we put away the money, the way it should have been put away. So we have it, and we're ready for times like this. So unlike a lot of other organizations, we're not crashing or burning. We're able to keep things going. So there's some good lessons to be learned there. And congratulations to our staff and our council for doing this.
So I heard a report the other day, this is a city of 500,000, and they had a reserve of $35 million. We're a city of 42,000, and we have a $13 million reserve. So we're doing pretty good. We're doing really good for, for these times and, and moving forward with these projects where people are cutting, we're moving forward with the projects, as Mr. Freya said. So if there are no other questions, Director Maloney, do we have any open to public hearing, any comments? Thank you, concerning the, the budget item, is that correct?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, do I have a motion for the approval of Resolution 6231, as read by title, which includes adopting the 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget, including employee salary schedule Division 4, the Los Banas Policy and Procedures Manual, and the Capital Improvement Plan summary? Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6231, as read by title.
Mr. Jones, is your light on?
Uh, it is.
Okay.
Second that, please.
Okay, motion by Lewis, seconded by Jones for, for the approval of city resolution, City Council Resolution 6231. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Consideration adoption of City Council Resolution 6232, allowing temporary outdoor dining in private parking lots and the use of city right-of-way to expand restaurant seating capacity. Hi, Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This particular item before you tonight, yes, I have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm just going to give you a little bit of background of why this item is being brought before you. So the state of California, the Department of Public Health, published industry guidelines for dine-in restaurants. We've been fortunate within Merced County to get to advance to Stage 2.5, which does allow for dine-in restaurants. With those guidelines set by the Department of Public Health, it prioritized outdoor seating and encouraged restaurants to expand outdoor seating if they complied with local laws and regulations. Implementation of social distancing has created a loss in seating capacity. So for restaurants, they do have to maintain that six-foot social distancing. So for examples of restaurants that have booths that are back-to-back, essentially, they're losing a table in between every other booth. It's been a serious loss for a lot of restaurants. And in an effort to support businesses and assist local restaurants, staff is proposing that the council would consider temporary outdoor dining. And this would help to gain some of that capacity that they've lost due to social distancing. So what we have before you tonight, like I said, is to allow temporary outdoor dining adjacent to private parking lots and city right-of-way. And this would be to expand that outdoor, that seating capacity. And this temporary allowance would expire, as staff is proposing, on October 31st, 2020, unless extended by the city council. So we want to give it a try. We want to let restaurants take advantage of this temporary allowance. And should the council decide to extend it based on circumstances or based on continuance of public health guidelines, then we would consider it at that time. We'd bring it back to the council. So key provisions within this particular temporary allowance. First, this is essentially, within these key provisions, are how this plan is, would work and how it's laid out. So first, we'd get an application. And we would have, which is provided to you within the staff report, we would receive a temporary outdoor dining permit application. So within that application, we'd get written permission and signature from the property owner. They would need to provide us with a site plan. They'd need to describe the number of chairs, tables. They'd need to tell us the provisions for access, what type of fencing and barriers they will have, any type of screening, any shade. We want to know the specifics within the application. We want to make sure it meets the guidelines and the process. Next, we would, within the guidelines, we would allow parking lots to be used. And these are private parking lots, can be used up to 50% of off-street private parking spaces for outdoor dining space when it's immediately adjacent to subject property. So for instance, if you have a restaurant downtown, you can only have your outdoor dining right in front of your restaurant so you're not impacting your neighbor, you know, the retail establishment next to you. Designated portions of the public right-of-way are limited to the sidewalk areas, adjacent on-street parking and alleys. So that's the only part of the public right-of-way that can be used. And in order to use that, we'd have to have clear access of at least four foot. This is to maintain ADA access. Unobstructed access to public utilities. So if there's a fire hydrant, that can't be blocked. Entrances to the main restaurant cannot be blocked as well. Need to maintain pedestrian and traffic safety, and it shall be aesthetically compatible. In addition, I do want to note that landscape areas cannot be used. So using downtown as an example, or even a, a restaurant on the highway, any landscape areas, or even if it's a tree well, we cannot have tables and chairs out on those landscaped areas. This is just a picture. I wanted to provide some visuals to be able to point the council into, into what staff is talking about. Obviously, this is post-COVID picture. And this is a city that is providing outdoor dining. And this is for social distancing. So you can see a couple of tables out on the sidewalk. This is again, this would be like an example of, of maybe something similar to what we could see possibly in downtown with some outdoor dining. And then this, I did show, choose this picture. This is actually, I would say, pretty similar to Los Banas. This is a bit wider sidewalk. We do have over 10-foot wide downtown sidewalks. And with maintaining at least a minimum of four-foot ADA access, we should be able to accommodate some outdoor dining with at least possibly four-foot wide tables. And then this is an example using barriers. Many cities already have outdoor dining established. And this is a beautiful way to complement outdoor dining, create that barrier. And it just, it adds beautification to the, to anywhere. So to, to whether it's the downtown or whether it's on private property.
So can I, can I ask, can they add umbrellas if they want to?
They sure can. So we do, that, I'm going to get to that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. So other key provisions included within this proposal, they must have appropriate lighting if they're operating after daylight hours. So staff would need to approve that. Barriers, like we showed in the previous picture, such as landscaping and planters, are permissible. So we would encourage that. We would want to see those types of barriers that complement the area. There would be no heating, cooking, or open flame permitted in the outdoor dining area. No food preparation, food displays, food storage, or refrigeration apparatus would be allowed on the public right-of-way. And then umbrellas and other decorative material is allowed as long as it's fire retardant. So this is an example of a private parking lot. They did use temporary fencing to provide that barrier. And you can see that on the asphalt, this was a parking lot. It is adjacent to a restaurant. So this is an example of how that could work. More key provisions provided is that the city would reserve the right to remove a sidewalk dining space if it created an obstruction or it violated any of the city guidelines, state, or local orders. We would allow for temporary parklets, which I do have a picture in the next slide of what that would look like. And that can be used and does not require the streets to be closed. So various examples, so many cities are doing this right now to help with restaurants provide some capacity. But what we've seen, kind of a handful of cities are closing streets where they have a large amount of restaurants. And then other cities are allowing parklets. We decided that parklets was a better alternative and the best fit for the city of Los Banas in that we don't just have one street with a ton of restaurants. So for instance, closing down Sixth Street would benefit only two restaurants. And we felt that that would be more of a hindrance to, to those downtown businesses, those retail businesses, if we shut down the street. So we are suggesting a parklet that would use the parking spaces directly in front of that business with appropriate barriers. Restaurants licensed by the state of California, which is ABC, the Alcoholic Beverage Control, will be permitted to sell and allow onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages within expanded dining areas. And this is actually a relief that's been provided by the state of California for outdoor dining and for restaurants specifically. So the state. So, um, the state of California, in, um, hearing the, the frustration from, um, restaurants about outdoor dining, that, you know, thank you, cities for allowing this, but hey, we, it doesn't really work, um, because we can't have our consumption of alcohol, um, with the outdoor dining. And the state of California has made a provision for that. And then there are hours of operations, which would limit Thursday through Saturday to be closed at 11:00 PM, and then Sunday through Wednesday to close at 10:00 PM. So this is an example, and this is just more of a bird's eye view, um, of a parklet. So you can see that, um, in this instance, it is, uh, parallel parking that has been, um, closed off, and it has a barrier to provide some outdoor dining. This is an example, I won't say this is a great example, but this is another example of you, just using some temporary barriers, um, to provide some of that protection for outdoor dining and creating that parklet. And then this is another example. So, um, lots of folks have become very creative during this time. And even prior to, to COVID, they, um, other cities have had outdoor dining. Um, we have not had businesses interested in investing in outdoor dining, but we're hoping with, um, the strict guidelines, um, set by public health and with the city's accommodation to allow temporary outdoor dining, that we would have some businesses that would take advantage of this and take this opportunity, um, to really add to the outdoor atmosphere.
What's the liability as far as, uh, uh, the, um, uh, who, it, it's our, it's our public sidewalk? So how does the liability insurance, are we the deep pocket, if, God forbid?
No, we do, we would require, because it, they would be using the public right-of-way, that they would provide us, um, a certificate, certificate of liability. Um, but in addition, we also require a hold harmless consent, um, as a part of our process. So, oh, it's, would be treated almost just like a special event.
Okay.
So key provisions, um, again, um, just moving on with what's built into this provision, um, they would be allowed to have tents and shade structures. Um, the outdoor seating area shall be maintained free of trash and other debris. And staff has set this up so that there would be no charge to businesses to utilize this temporary allowance in the city's effort to support dine-in restaurants during this time. Essentially, we're trying to make it as simple as possible. So they provide us with our application that's attached with the items that we need. We would go out, do a, a quick, um, inspection and give them that permit, um, issue them a permit, that business. Um, we want to get folks up and running at somewhat, um, full capacity so that, um, they can continue on with their livelihoods. This is an example of a tent, um, and with a sidewalk. Um, I would anticipate that, um, where this would probably be most feasible would be, um, on a private parking lot area. Um, in the downtown area, just due to the makeup and the mobility, um, you're probably looking at more of umbrellas versus actual tent structures. Um, I did want to give an example of an actual downtown business that is interested in outdoor dining. Um, I, I had screened, um, prior to us bringing this forward to the council, had surveyed, um, various restaurants on Pacheco as well as downtown, actually surveyed all the restaurants since, that didn't have an outdoor dining already, so an outdoor patio, and asked, would they be open-minded, um, or, um, would they participate in a program if the city were able to put this together? And, um, a lot of the downtown businesses did show interest. Um, Zafiro's, which is now at 650 Ice Street, which is the old Shiner's Building, is very interested in pursuing this. Um, as they see it, they would utilize the sidewalk area. Um, they would provide a barrier as a part of that sidewalk, but with the pavers, um, they believe that they could create some, um, outdoor atmosphere that would be inviting to their customers. They're also in a, in a different circumstance that they have, um, a parking lot next door that we could possibly, um, help accommodate, um, with some tables. Um, the lot next door that had the building that was demolished, uh, just has a, like a base coat of aggregate, which I wouldn't suggest, um, using for outdoor dining. It's pretty uneven, um, but maybe the asphalt in the parking lot would be, um, a good, a good spot. Um, however, in speaking with the property owner, he is most interested in just the sidewalk. Um, and this is due to eyes on the street. They want to be able to, um, be able to watch folks at those tables, um, and keep an eye. And the way that the business is set up, it would make most sense on the sidewalk. Um, and that was really also a part of the discussion with a lot of the businesses on Pacheco. It was, having outdoor dining is, unless they already have it, it's not conducive, um, for them, um, because eyes on the street. So speaking to, um, Dave Duncan, for instance, at the Country Waffle, he had stated, um, you know, the way his kitchen is set up, and really the only place where he could put outdoor dining would, would be towards the back, away from Pacheco Boulevard, because the traffic is so much, it's so noisy. He had said, you know, it's going to have to be in that location, but then I don't have any windows in that area. I wouldn't have any eyes, uh, you know, on that outdoor dining. So for him, it just really wouldn't work out. And that was kind of the same answer I got from a lot of the restaurants on Pacheco. Um, so with that, um, staff is recommending the council would consider adopting Resolution Number 6232 allowing temporary outdoor dining in private parking lots and the use of city right-of-way to expand restaurant seating capacity. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, do you have any questions at this time? Go ahead.
Uh, so with passing this resolution, we would allow them to build a platform in the immediate parking stalls, say, for downtown on Sixth Street in front of their shop, right?
Yes, um, and actually, that's a very good point. Um, so it would have to be temporary, but the way that the slope of the street with the curb and gutter, you would have to build a platform. There's actually some great examples of other cities that have allowed restaurants to do that on a temporary basis. Um, so they have built a flat, platform so that it's flush with the sidewalk. The street parklet is flush with the sidewalk. Um, and, um, it would obviously need to be reviewed. I would consult with Public Works and being able to do that. Um, in some circumstances, it may not work out because we need to maintain storm drain, um, you know, water flow. Um, but I'm sure there's something that we could probably work out with them to make that platform work.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, are there any other questions by council members? Okay. Not hearing any. Uh, let's go on to then consideration of City Council Resolution 6232. Do I have a motion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution 6232 as, uh, as, as read by title.
Okay. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motioned by Jones, seconded by Fariah for the approval of 6232. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried.
Thank you.
Okay, we've been sitting here for two hours and 12 minutes, and I think, you know, people looking at me. Uh, let's take about a five-minute break.
We took a break already.
Yeah. All right, we're back. And let's go on to Item 10, Illegal Fireworks Presentation. Chief Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, tonight, I, I'm bringing to you, uh, just a, uh, quick presentation regarding the fireworks, some of the rules and, uh, expectations that the city has, and talk a little bit about, you know, what, what we've done county-wide as well. So, a lot like in the last few years, we've, we've come and discussed some of the rules that we have, talk about the citations that can be received, uh, by using illegal fireworks or using the Safe and Sane fireworks, uh, against our, our local ordinance. So, oh, well, we got, uh, fireworks, you know, our rules. Obviously, fireworks are a major part of our American tradition. You know, every Fourth of July, you think of Fourth of July, you think of fireworks. Um, they provide hours of, of great entertainment for your family, your friends. But we need to remember that they need to be used by adults, and they need to be used responsibly and to be very careful. Some of the rules that we have, I just want to kind of go over this. It's just to remind everybody that it is unlawful to discharge Safe and Sane fireworks, uh, within the city of Los Banas, except for the days of July, or June 28th to July 4th, from the hours of 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Safe and Sane fireworks are only allowed to be discharged on private property. This means on your private property, your driveway, um, not the sidewalk, not the street, not in the parks, not in, um, the city parking lots or other public, uh, locations. It's unlawful for individuals under the age of 18 to purchase or possess fireworks. So the, the fireworks booths have all been informed that, uh, they are not to sell any fireworks to anyone that is, uh, over 18 or, or allow them to even carry it off the site. Uh, and that, that, that holds true to parents and adults to make sure that they, uh, are not in custody of any, uh, any children under the, age of 18, and they can also be cited for, for doing that. Um, dangerous fireworks in the city of Los Banas, uh, are, is no different. They're, they're dangerous, they're illegal, I'm sorry, in the state of California, Merced County, and the city of Los Banas in all. Um, if you saw recently, we did a, a small presentation with, with the other local agencies in the county. Uh, it was myself, uh, City of Atwater, Representative City Atwater, City of Merced, and County Fire. We came together and did a Celebrate Safe presentation that we posted on our social media page just to, just to remind people, uh, the local ordinances that, that each organ, each, uh, uh, jurisdiction, jurisdiction has. And just to remind everybody that we know people are going to be out. We know people are going to be celebrating, just to remind them to be safe. Safe and Sane violations, um, so you can receive a citation by using Safe and Sane fireworks. You can purchase them, you can possess them, but there are things that you can not do with them. Like I said earlier, uh, possession from a, of these fireworks by a minor, uh, discharging of fireworks by a minor, illegal discharge of fireworks, um, that not with the, the date I mentioned earlier, June 28th to July 4th, in the time specified. Illegal discharge of Safe and Sane fireworks on private property, uh, without the owner's consent. So someone that says, you're lighting fireworks on somebody's back, somebody's driveway, and they don't want you there, you can receive a citation. Unlawful for adults to allow minors to discharge Safe and Sane fireworks. Um, and like I said earlier, on public property. Now this right here is a Safe and Sane, uh, label that, that is on every Safe and Sane fireworks. You'll see this, um, seal on all the fireworks that are in the booths. If you have, or you find some fireworks, or somebody hands you some fireworks that does not have this seal, they are illegal. Whether they shoot up in the air or explode on the ground, uh, if they don't have this seal, they're illegal to have. And if you possess these, um, or you're selling these, or you, or you're, you're putting it out there for, to be, to use, or it could be in the back of your car, it could be in, in your, sitting on your driveway. If you possess it, you can receive a citation. If you possess it, you can receive a citation of $1,250 in the city of Los Banas. And that's per violation. Depending on the situation, there has been, there have been people that have received a citation for each individual fireworks, because the amount of stuff that they had going on, to make sure that, and, and uncontrolled in regards to multiple people in possession of them. So, a little bit about fireworks safety, this is something that I, I shared with the fireworks booths. These things are on a flyer that we hand out to, they are to hand out to every single person that buys fireworks. It reminds people not to use alcohol, be influenced by alcohol, drugs, and, and just to remember to be safe regarding that. We know people are celebrating, we just want them to remember that they need to take care of themselves before they do these things. Never let children handle or play with fireworks. Never aim or point fireworks at anybody. It seems like these are things that we should all know, be aware of, but we just need to make sure, because people do get hurt every year because of them. Do not light the fireworks in an area where there's dry or brush grass. I would say the same thing towards structures or anything that could definitely catch fire. Always be cautious when lighting fireworks during windy conditions. This time of year, we have windy conditions most evenings, so please be aware of that. Always keep your head, your face, your body away from the item that you're, that you're lighting. Never look into the tube after lighting it, or after you've, you've ignited the firework. And always light the fireworks with a extended device. And if you're purchasing the fireworks from the booths here locally, which I hope everybody does to support these groups, they sell devices for lighting these, and they, they will provide those for you. Never attempt to relight, alter, or fix any fireworks. If it's a dud, it's a dud. If it doesn't go off, don't try to relight it. Don't look it, don't put your head over it, let it sit there for about 10 minutes, and then stick it in a bucket of water, and then, and then discard it. Like regarding the bucket of water, we need to remember to have a fire extinguisher, garden hose, bucket of water for, for emergencies, because we will have multiple fires. And we have had grass fires in the last, just the last couple of days, and odds are some of them were probably from fireworks.
Chief Hurley?
Yes.
If they alter a Safe and Sane fireworks, that's still subject to a $1,250 fine?
Oh yeah, definitely, and it, it could, it could be even farther in regards to civil code, because of their altering and making it, making it a dangerous firework.
Okay.
The, the last time they immersed the fireworks in, in a bucket of water, this is a big one, because about 1:30, 2 o'clock on every, every Fifth of July, we, we have a lot of garbage can fires, because people throw their, their discarded fireworks that they use into the garbage cans, and, and they, and, and they, they catch fire. And whether that could be by a fence, with the wind, it could be next to the house. A lot of times they're out in the middle of the street, which is better than right next to the house in regards to that, but please be aware, please remember to put these things in a bucket of water, let them soak, and then discard them. We also want to remember that the noise and lights of the fireworks frighten animals. You know, they frighten animals. They, you know, some animals can handle it, some just have huge issues with it, and I, I believe, you correct me wrong, if I'm wrong, chief, that animal control is very busy during this time with, with pets that are jumping the fences and, and running off. So please take care of your animals, please be, be cautious of that. And I'll add to this also, the noise and the light, we want to be cautious of our neighbors, we want to be cautious of veterans, just because, because we want, these things do affect people. Never use fireworks indoors. Seems like I shouldn't have to say that, but unfortunately, we continue to have to say that. Always store fireworks in a cool, dry place, and, and just remember that these, these things are dangerous, they, they, they can be dangerous if they're not taken care of properly. So that, that's my quick presentation, it's, it's a lot like I do every year, but, you know, I know people are going to be out celebrating. My goal is that they continue, that they are safe, they show respect to their neighbors, and they can get through, get through the Fourth and, and move on, and, and have, have a great Fourth of July, and celebrate for the reason why we're celebrating, you know? So I wish everybody a happy, safe Fourth of July, and please remember to be safe and take care of yourself and your neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any questions, Chief Hurley?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Item 11, Advisory to Public Notices, one report.
The public hearing will be held for a mobile food vendor on private property. The property is 330 West Pacheco Boulevard, which is a hotel. This is for Johanna Acosta, doing business as Botanas El Conchania. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, June 24th at 4:00 p.m., and actually, we will stream it on a GoToMeeting platform, and the link will be available on the Planning Commission's agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, City Manager's Report. Alex? Could you try the other mic for me? You're going to wear out a path there.
Nothing today, mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Item 13, reportable, report update on Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, and Measure V Committee. We're in the process of, of the expansion of the waste site out at Billy Wright, and if that's done, it is going to be a, a huge lift off the city for Dos Palos Castine in Los Banas, because then our garbage, and I keep saying this, will not be trucked to Highway 59, which will be so expensive for the residents on the west side. So that's why we're pursuing this. And I just, so the city attorney doesn't get mad at me, Mark, could you just make a quick announcement about the, the, the money that we received? This is a good thing.
Good evening. You thought you'd get away with not hearing from me, huh? Or you hoped? No. This all is predicated on the governing board of MCAG's approval, but the CMAC Scoring Committee, there was, I think it was nine projects, we scored really high on them, we were number one, number one project. This is for the synchronization of State Route 152, all the signals. It's over two-year span, federal fiscal year 2021 and federal fiscal year 2122. The first year is for $100,000, and that's for the design and the environmental. The second fiscal year is for $800,000, which is actually to do the construction. I think it's kind of important to know that it takes a long time to do the, to do the PE, the engineering and environmental, but if you can move money forward, you can't move money backwards. So if you don't, if the construction all got in the same year as the design, and we didn't meet that, we, we are not allowed to move it backward, you lose it. Knowing that we have it in the next year after that, we could move it forward. I think that might save us two or three months at the very max. It takes a long time to get the federal environmental, but it's a $900,000 grant with CMAC, and it'll be for synchronization and the equipment and the, and all that stuff. We'll go to Caltrans, it's theirs, but we are the ones that are, will be in charge of the project.
Thank you.
And there's no, we're going to get toll credits on it, and that's going to be our matching, there's nothing that we match out of the city offers.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Good news. Okay, let's go on to Item 14, City Council Member Reports. Mrs. Santos is not here, Mr. Jones?
No report, mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis?
No report.
Okay. Mr. Faria?
Just, for the schools, there will be graduation ceremonies modified to meet the times, so watch the, the school, the school websites, and sometime, in July, we should be seeing some formal graduation ceremonies. Thanks.
Thank you. And if we haven't already done so, could we get an updated report on our parks, so people know exactly what they can do in the parks as per the county order and the state order? And Little League, if someone can contact the, the, the people who are, who are working with, with Little League to make sure they have all the correct information of what's allowed and what's not allowed, and any sports programs for the summer. So we get this information out, and so no one's in the dark about, about, you know, what's allowed and what's not allowed, and why, as to, you know, whose order it actually is. Okay, so with that, if there's no other business, any other comments? Okay, I will adjourn this meeting at 6:34.